Executive session for the purpose of discussing current litigation and the employment of particular persons. Second. Motion carries. Pop a motion to enter open session, may have a motion.
So long.
Second. So a motion here, now we're going to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I applaud the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so next thing we're going to do is we're going to have Florida commendations for fall student athletes, Dan, you want to take over with that? And after that presentation, we're going to have a fifteen minute recess that we have cookies and punch. Just to get back there and mingle and go over our awards. Thank you. Dan?
Thank you, Bob. It is my pleasure tonight to turn this part of the program over to our athletic director, Mr. McKenna. As many of the families in the audience know, and our student athletes know, we've had an incredible run here of success with our athletic programs, whether it's fall, winter, or spring. And tonight we take a moment to honor those, and I'll tell you this, for those who don't usually turn this on on a Wednesday night and tune into our board meetings, whenever we have any kind of student recognitions, it's certainly our favorite nights, and they're our favorite board meetings. I know our board appreciates it, whether it's our Falcons of the Month or our student athletes. So we're really excited to have everybody here tonight. So thanks for coming. Mr. McKenna.
Thank you, everybody, for having me today. This is always a pleasure to come and speak in front of the board and obviously recognize our student athletes today. You know, we are going to recognize our fall athletes here from the past fall twenty twenty four. But before I do that, I just want, I have a couple of just brief announcements. First of all, we'd like to just honor all our male, excuse me, our female girls and women. Today is National Girls, Women, and Sports Day. So we want to honor all our coaches, our athletes, even our male coaches that coached girl sports. They do a tremendous job. We've had tremendous, tremendous success in our female programs. And, you know, it's a wonderful honor today, this day is for them. With that said, on the award I have here, we got a wonderful opportunity, thanks to you folks, I believe just at the last Board of Education meeting, the one before, presented with the opportunity to do girls modified flag football. And just came out today due to obviously our special date today from the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation from the Buffalo Bills, a grant that we're part of that. And if Mr. K would scroll down, you see go to section six. And in section six, there we are. So as you can see, just in section four, five, and six, there's very few. And once again, you know, when we say we're the state of the art, we're trying to get above the trends of everybody else. This is just a real good example that when something comes to our table, we see that interest, we're going to bring it to you, and I can't thank you enough because the sustainability right now, I know, can be challenging. But as you can see, there's not many in the area, both in section five and section six, which is Rochester over to us that are involved in this program. And even before this whole thing came out, we were there, ready to go and moving forward, and we posted for the position already, and pretty close to finalizing that coach. So we're awfully, awfully excited to bring this award here for our, believe it or not, our sixty ninth sport that we offer here at Niagara We Field Center of Schools, and we're awfully proud of every single one of them, including this one. So without further ado, I'm going to get started today, this evening with our fall sports athletes. Again, what we're going to do is just honor a few highlights from a couple of different avenues here. First, our first team, second team, and third team, Maga Frontier League All-Stars, as well as just a couple of highlights from each of our teams. We do have one team, our girls cross-country team, that will come in here in a moment. And we're going to highlight that because they're our NFL twenty twenty four girls cross-country champions, as well as our overall scholar athlete. So those are a couple of things we'll honor today. Without further ado, we can start with our first team, which is our girls soccer team. They're going to be kind of one at a time kind of grading through. We'll have a couple of athletes that are here from the team. Again, as you know, it won't be the whole team because we're just honoring the first team, all league, second team, and third team. So girls soccer, first team was Cindy Gellis, first team Caitlin Parker, second team Marissa Ricker, second team Casey Mosher, second team Leah McDonald, and third team Brielle Peterson. And just one other quick announcement about Marissa Ricker, very, very special honor for her. Of course, she's not here today, but she's one of our first girls, real first soccer player, I believe, that has scored a hundred and quarter, hundred goals in her career. So what's wonderful was around the applause.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And thank you. Congratulations. Thanks, Brielle. Our second team we're going to honor today, we have a first team and a third team member, our boys golf team. The first team is Quinn Brick, and our third team, Justin Mosher. So boys golf, first team Quinn Brick, third team Justin Mosher. If you don't believe any of those athletes who are here today, but congratulations to boys golf. Our third team is girls tennis. And they're going to be coming in here in a moment. And I was out there at least before, we had Kayla here today. Briella Dorzansky and Cece Ellis, they should be coming in right now. Absolutely, here they come. But just to reiterate, second singles, first team is Morgan World, second singles, third team, Michael Brooks. First doubles, second team Victoria Rose. First doubles, second team Kayla Dorzansky. And second doubles, third team Cece Ellis and Maya Pollak. So congratulations, once again, to our girls, second team. Our next team is boys football. Boys football had an outstanding season this year. They worked really hard to achieve some great success. And it's nice to see the program developing in a positive fashion. We can tell by we had two first teamers on the boys football team, both Christian Turner and Garrett Chase. Christian and Garrett, raise your hand. You're here tonight as well. Second team, we had Chase Richards, Mason Meisner, Dean Lewis, Cameron Guerin, where, excuse me, Tristan Fox. Dee, raise your hand, and Chase, raise your hand. So I'd like to honor these gentlemen, two first and second team, and many of these fellows are going to be back with us next year. So I'm awfully excited for another great season. Gentlemen, go shake hands, congratulations. Our next team is boys volleyball. First team we have for boys volleyball is Adrian Harco, second team Andrew Kelly, and third team Harrison Barrett. Boys volleyball. It's not eight announcer, but he must not be here, but another round of applause for boys volleyball, a great season. At this point, I'm going to turn the microphone over to our head girls volleyball coach. This is Brandy Cochran. Brandy Cochran's been with us for many years, as she has a well-established volleyball program. And has been our varsity coach for many years, and has taken a couple of trips, you know, out to the Albany area for a state championship for a couple of years in the past five years here. So I'm going to turn the mic over to to Coach Cochran for the first team, second team, thirteen, and share a couple accolades. This Cochran?
The first athlete, now she's not here, is Olivia Scalzabala. She made the third team. She was one of our setters and kind of defensive players on the team. We have our senior, Libero Sophia Smith, she made second team. Then we have our junior Lindsay Tyler, she made first team. All NFL, she also made first team All Western New York and All State. So she did a great job this year. And then we have freshman Kendra Rogers, she made second team. Let's say we ended up second in the league. Unfortunately, we lost to Clarence in the in the playoffs, but thirteen and three record, we always end up finishing strong. We are going to lose Sophia, but the rest of the team is back. So hopefully it'll be a great season next year. Congrats, girls.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was delighted to watch the girls volleyball team. They're always still very successful. They did another great job this season. Okay, moving on, we have our boys soccer team. And again, I'm going to pass the microphone over to another one of our well-established veteran coaches and Coach Coulter to recognize a couple of his team highlights, as well as his All-Stars as well. Coach Coulter.
Now used to speaking into my, this is nice. This is Nathan Dunn. He was our second team all-league rep this year. We had two other gentlemen who are not here tonight, also second team all-league. Nate led the team in goals with fourteen goals this season, and he's going to double that next year. And is premier as captain of the girls' soccer team. We just, he just found that out.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn the microphone again over to Coach Megan Smith. Megan Smith is going to be speaking tonight about our boys cross-country team, or girls cross-country team. And she has several things to talk about because there's been many successful athletes on both those teams. So I'm going to pass the mic over to Coach Smith, and she'll proudly, as she always does, speak about her two passions, the boys and girls cross-country.
Yeah, we can just line up there. Like in the face of those. There we go. First, I'd like to thank the board for taking the time tonight to honor all of our student athletes. All of our Niagara We Field teams have worked very hard on and off the field this season, and having this opportunity to have them honor means a lot to our programs. First, I would like to thank the board for hiring a new member of our cross-country family. Coach Henry came to us with a wealth of knowledge, even though we both ran for a rival Division One schools. Her coming to our staff only added to our program, and this season would have been nearly, not nearly as magical and successful with her. Standing in front of you are our student athletes. The word student comes first. This team is impressive. I run them through rigorous practices and make them get up before school at five forty-five for workouts, and we run a lot. The group is able to balance our crazy workouts, the workload of academics, hold the part-time jobs, and participate in community service as a team. So we're able to give back to the community. Every member of this varsity girls and varsity boys cross-country team has over a ninety-two GPA for the first semester. We already gave them their pins in our banquet. In addition to this, can Gabby McKenzie please step forward? One of our senior captains, Gabrielle McKenzie, was voted by the entire Section Six Committee and has earned a Western New York Scholar Athlete. This honor was in the Buffalo News last week, and she is the only recipient for Niagara We Field. This is a well-deserved honor, and I am proud that the section recognized what we all at NW know. Gabby is a great student leader, one of the kindest, well-rounded student athletes that we have had the pleasure to coach. And Gabby is very excited because Gabby gets a certificate. And the most committed scholar athlete t-shirt. After athletics, winning is still not next. Sportsmanship is next for me. I have said for twenty-four years of coaching, I would rather coach respectful, kind athletes that work hard than ones that win and aren't sportsmanlike. When you can do both, well, that's even better. If you could see this group of girls at a cross-country meet, you would be impressed. They stand at the finish line and they cheer every girl through the line, not just our NW girls. The NFL coaches vote at the end of every season on which team earned fall all sportsmanship team of the season. And this is the fifth year women's cross-country has been chosen. Emily Deserio, just a freshman on our team, was the lead recipient of the Western New York All Sportsmanship Award. I think this speaks volumes to our program. Plus, she has to be kind for all she's cut. And I can do that because she's my child. She also received her patch at our banquet. Now on to Lynn. We like to let, these kids worked all summer, running, lifting, power fitness. We have a team goal to remain undefeated for the fourth season in a row. We did that. We wanted to be NFL champions for the fourth season in a row. We did that. We wanted to win sectionals for the first time in school history. We came really close, four points. It stung, but when we received the runner-up plaque in our patches at sectionals, it was a moment when we realized we didn't fail. We made school history. We had happy tears and new goals. We sent two girls to our state championships, sophomore Tegan Brady. And freshman Emily Deserio. But they're receiving their state participation from New York State. We had three runners named as the Buffalo News Runners of the Week. Tegan stepped forward, Emily stepped forward, and Sydney March is not here. Lastly, our all-league honors were impressive with our seven girls receiving all-league honors. Tegan, Emily, and Sydney were named first team all-league. Brianna Wilson, only an eighth grader, and Ava, a sophomore, were named to second team. And Sarah, a freshman, and Liam, a sophomore, were earned third team all-league. My boys team is shy, and they were a runner of NFL championships. Our lone is captain, so our lone representative is captain. Senior captain, Carson Davies, and Carson was also awarded third team all-league this year. And we'll remember on this honor, we team. As a team, we'd like to send our gratitude to the high school administration, our athletic department, teachers, and all the families behind us who have guided these athletes. Your support is helping shape the future student athlete at Niagara We Field. We appreciate the board's time and recognition of this team, not only their victories, but the character that these boys and girls display. They serve as role models and set a high standard for future student athletes. I am lucky that the board trusts Coach Henry and I with this program. Thank you.
So if you, we just are doing this this year, we've always had the sectional plaques in the hallway by the gym. But from, I think it was twenty twenty to currently, this would be the next one going up. They're all in the hallway. So then I think when I counted within the last, so this would be five years, we've had thirty-seven sectional championships. That's amazing. It's incredible, isn't it? We're awfully proud of them, obviously. You know, with your coaches like Coach Smith and you know, Coach Cochran and Coach Coulter, they, you know, they sent the message to everybody and sent the message for the whole program. You have many, many coaches like that in our program. I don't want to take any more time up. Now there's kids that love the juice and the cookies back there, so we're going to let them go. But once again, I truly appreciate you. Appreciate you allowing me to come in today to speak to the board in regards to these wonderful student athletes that really represent of our programs all about. Thank you. For South of February programs all about. Thank you.
So. This February, of course, February of twenty twenty six. The. Some of the other capital projects work that we've had done, there's been a couple of issues and so we're working with our. Construction manager, architects and in some of our. In independent crews who have come in to do some studies of what maybe some of those issues were. We had a coil freeze up. In one of our rooms, so we're looking into that. Um, I will put back to the board once we can have a really good feel as to what we think. Um, caused that that freezing and the impact that it had on that that new room. Um, many of you actually went and toured the. Two new STEM rooms at the middle school while the room across the hall, that's a new tech room, that room was one rooms that was impacted. Um, by a coil that burst, so we're looking into that and. See where where we believe fault lies, so. That's all I wanted to share.
Okay. External written communications to the boards, we have some fundraiser from, uh, which is posted. I don't know if it's up there. Um, next we have a ex officio student member report. Jonah.
So I'm just saying.
We had.
I just wanted to congratulate the athletes and everybody worked very hard. And just simple congratulations to them. There were, and honestly still are some comments and concerns about. The like heating cooling. Um, some people are, or most people are really cold and no longer always with. You know, someone's not being adequately heated and. There's a lot of concern about that, but one bundle up with everyday classes. And then people are mentioning how in the summer, sort of taking back and off of that, it gets very hot. Um, as I'm sure most of you know. Um, so people were just hoping for some way to combat that. That I guess temperature. So yeah, just just concerns about the heating and cooling of all waves and different levels. And another thing is some of the gym classes we've been doing, I think it's four hockey. Um, and. A decent amount of people have been getting maybe splinters from the sticks or. You know, falling down or you're getting checked by the sticks or just simple injuries like that. But, um, I'd say this is probably one of the more. Contact based units in gyms, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And lastly, there were some comments made about the construction for the auditorium. Especially around where the old auditorium was and like sort of the glass hallway and the cafeteria. Um, it's been a lot colder, obviously due to the insulation or lack of insulation. So yeah, a lot of overall, just a lot of temperature. Hopes of it being over at some point. I don't know if there's much that we can do about it. But.
Joe, if I could, just a couple of those things. One of them, especially for that front hallway, um, it's one of the areas that we had some issues. Some of the units and it, the work called for insulation in that area, so. It's something that we're working through because it should be, it should have been insulated better than it is. And that's leading to a little bit of the drafting that you're getting in that hallway. As far as the individual rooms, when when those rooms just sort of, when those rooms do do get to a certain temperature, those teachers, of course. Are given the option to move out of those rooms if there's an issue in a, in a particular space or not. Um, and then they make that decision if they want to move or, you know, we always have pictures in the building. As far as the summer though, um, and the the temperatures that, you know, we tend to get sometimes in June and, you know, early September even. We are through our current capital project work. Um, at the high school because we have high school units that are going in. Um, looking to install coils into those units, so air conditioning coils. On the second floors, the second floor, I said floors, but because there's two different segments of the building that actually have second floor at the high school. And they both have work scheduled, so we will, um, when this capital project is all done. Have a C in those portions of our high school. With the idea, I know where the middle school people are coming right now, right? With the idea that in our next capital project, we'll address that same problem on the second floor. At our, at our middle school, so we're trying to tackle this, um, you know, in a sensible way, in a way that. We can afford, it's very, very expensive, so as we turn over those systems. There's an upcharge to put, um, air conditioning to add coils to those systems. But that's the time to do it, it's the best time to do it, so when we. Change over in our next project, our middle school, we'll, you know, aim to do the same thing. So I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. Oh, and I did see, uh, Mr. Stack making note of the hockey. First of all, there should be no context sports in PE, right? If they're playing for our school hockey team, then they can be in a context, so I'm sure Mr. Stack will be, you know, reaching out to our PE department. Thank you.
Okay, so next, um. President's report, uh. I just want to bring up one thing that happened, uh, last Friday. We, I I'm on the, uh, BOSI's board. And, uh, we actually did a tour of, um. That Niagara Career Tech and, uh, the Niagara Academy. But we also, along with that, we actually did a tour of, uh, Eric Road. And what happened, uh, was kind of amazing because we got nothing but accolades here. About that move that we made at Eric Road, we added three or four classrooms. But the big thing was that they they came about, is when we went over there, they're they're talking about. How well that was incorporated into the school itself. And they were really amazed and had nothing but, like I say, high accolades. For Nora and her group and Teresa and the parents group. They they just brought those kids in and they just felt, they felt like they're part of the school and it was a. Was really nice to see, like there was, really, we weren't seeing nothing but the school itself because they blended in so well. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up. I give them high accolades for that. Uh, other than that, superintendent's report.
Thanks, Bob, for mentioning that. I mean, it's, it's really been a smooth transition. We've heard a lot of that same feedback. Quite frankly, the, the. Uh, Principal Bocis and then Nora O'Brien and Principal Eric Road. Just did an incredible job really working together on that transition and in our. Facilities department and their facilities department worked really well to turn those rooms into to to classrooms. It was a, it was a pretty incredible thing and we gave them a pretty short timeline, right? And they they turned it over and it's been been really seamless. And then I, I was so impressed with the way the parent group, um, invited them to be part of the school, invited them to be part of the, the parent group, that the parents of those families. It was really awesome, and, you know, of course, some of the students in that program, of course, are students. So it's been a, been a really nice transition and a, and a smooth one, so thanks for pointing that out. Uh, I want to turn it over to Tom with a few updates.
Yeah, thank you, uh, just a couple of quick updates on hiring and where we are with staffing. We are already starting to forecast a little bit for the upcoming school year. Obviously, we're heading tandem with the budget. I know you're gonna have a preliminary look at that this evening, uh, but we are currently always canvassing still for drivers as well as bus attendants. There are a few active postings right now for district-wide laborer, as well as two monitor leaning positions at Colonia Village. So if you know of anyone interested or anybody listening at home, know anybody, please get in touch with me directly here at the district, or please go to our website and visit under the personnel page. Um, also, um, on the student side and people's side, um, we have an update on pre-K registration that has started for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and, uh, that will be continuing through March seventh. Just a quick note for anyone listening there, uh, your child must be four years old by twelve-one of twenty-five to be able to participate in that. I believe we're already up to twenty-four, uh, registered, um, at the today. And that's a fairly, that's a promising number for this early on into the process, right? Um, also accepting kindergarten applications as well, uh, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And that will be taking place March, end through April twenty-fifth of this year. So, uh, just bearing in mind, the child must be five by, um, December first of two thousand twenty-five to be able to register. Those applications are certainly available on the district website and at the district office, uh, which is open Monday through Friday, eight to four. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Some of you may know this, some of you may not. The, um, New York State Power Authority, through a contract that they have with our district and actually two other districts, Niagara Falls and Lewiston Harbor, provide, um, low-cost electric to our district. With that agreement, though, um, comes an, an ability of the power authority to raise those rates. This school year, we, uh, both myself and, and Allison Davis have been working with the power authority, and we've been invited to meetings, um, they've made this process pretty transparent. But the issue is that they're raising the rates. And they're, they're raising the rates at, um, a, a, a really, um, fast clip. In other words, um, they provided us with three different scenarios. The first of which was going to be a hundred and twenty-something, a hundred and thirty percent increase in year one. They didn't go with that scenario. Right now, they've put out that they're going with scenario two, which was a thirty-seven percent increase in year one, a twenty-three percent in year two, a twenty-three percent in year three, and a twenty-four percent in year four. Um, those are really significant increases, right? Annual increases for four years. And the rationale is that they've been utilizing their, um, reserves to help with their budget, and they haven't been passing those increased costs along to, um, the end users and the people that they have contracts with. What we've gone on the record asking is that they stretch that out even further. Um, we're asking them to stretch those increases out over ten years. Um, so, um, it's not just affecting our three schools, it's affecting, uh, businesses, uh, small businesses, it's affect, affecting manufacturing. Uh, many institutions that have agreements with the power authority are impacted by this rate increase. So, um, we're obviously concerned, we've, um, we were at a, um, we're invited to an opportunity to, to speak about these increases and the impacts we thought that they would have on our district. Just to put it in perspective, for next year with that thirty-seven percent increase, we'd be looking at almost a hundred thousand dollar increase in our electric bill, um, assuming similar usage, uh, next year to this year. So those are, those are, and then you can figure if that was thirty-seven percent, what's twenty-three and twenty-three and twenty-four percent? You know, we're talking about pretty significant increases over a four-year period. So, you know, where it's over a hundred percent increase over that, um, four-year period. So we're, we're concerned, we've brought it their attention, they've asked us certainly to take part in the process. Now we're hoping they make adjustments because we've, um, shared our thoughts on it. The, um, Greenway Project, we've provided some updates. We are meeting next week and presenting to the host community part of Greenway, um, to hopefully secure the funding for those outdoor learning spaces. If you recall, the outdoor learning spaces include the, um, bridge, the boardwalk out here by Cogga Creek with the little steps downs to the creek that can be used as a classroom. It also includes playgrounds at, uh, Colonia Village, Eric Road, and West Street. Okay, um, so the total dollar amount is what, about two and a half million dollars, somewhere around there? You're talking about a half a million dollars for each of those three playgrounds. So we're, we're hoping that, um, that will be approved by them. It will then come back to the board for board approval, because those are host community funds that are our funds. It does not require, um, uh, a vote, um, in May, but it, it will involve a vote of the Board of Education. During new business, um, we will need to have action on a BOSI's board representative for next year. As Bob mentioned earlier in the meeting, he's currently this board's representative and our district's representative for the BOSI's Board of, of Education. So we'll be able to talk about that, take action during new business. Um, I want to thank those of you who were able to come to the, uh, NOSBA legislative breakfast. For those that don't know, NOSBA is Niagara Orleans School Boards Association. All of our representatives, local representatives, were there, um, at the breakfast, so that was really great. And it's, to me, always promising if, after we present and speak and talk about the things that are important to us, that when our legislators get up, they're sending and stating the same messages, right? And we certainly heard that. So we've, we've had their support, um, I think for a long time, and since, since I've been here, and they continue to, um, support the initiatives that we're pushing for. We went through a lot of things that we're, that we've been asking for, pushing for as far, as far as legislative priorities. When we get into our budget presentation a little bit here, talk about what some of those things are. And, um, last but not least, uh, we moved our meeting with our financial consultant, who helps us with our long-term financial plan. We moved his meeting to the April second Board of Education meeting. Okay, so Dr. Rick Timms will be joining us at that meeting. That's all I have for them.
All right, thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dan. Next, we have a report to the board, a finance budget presentation.
So let me start with the good news. The good news is this, um, and that this kind of news hasn't happened since I've been here. The Foundation Aid number, it seems like we've, we started, you know, and a lot of you have been on the board. We, we started with asking them to fully fund Foundation Aid, and then we were behind in our Foundation Aid payments. And that finally, over a three-year period, they were going to get us fully funded in Foundation Aid. For those that don't know, Foundation Aid is the one part of our aid that comes from the state that we can use how we see fit, right? It's not tied to, um, library funds or something like that, or it's not coming back to us because of work we already did or money we already spent. Okay? So, um, next year's Foundation Aid number is the best number that we've seen, um, since Allison and I have been here working together. Why, you should ask. They decided to take some of the recommendations, whenever I say they, really, it's the executive budget. So at this point, it's the governor's budget, this isn't the final budget. But they took the recommendations from the Rockefeller Institute, which said, number one, you need to start using the current data. They were using two thousand census data. Now they're using twenty-twenty census data. That twenty-twenty census data, as our district has changed, has resulted in a significant increase in our Foundation Aid for next year. Again, as it stands right now, the legislative, the, the, the legislative budget hasn't happened yet, right? We don't have a final budget, so we're gonna have to wait till April to do that. So we'll be walking through this budget process, waiting to hear what the legislators say. Could there be more? Could there be less? We don't know. But as of right now, there was a significant increase in our Foundation Aid. So that's, that's a really good thing. Okay, so I mentioned some of the legislative priorities. What you're gonna see on these screens, I promise I'll talk fast, because some of these things have repeated from year after year, some of them. These legislative priorities are priorities that were really developed by two different entities. One, NISBA, which is the New York State School Boards Association, which our board belongs to. And also NISCUS, which is the New York State Council of School Superintendents, which is a group that I've loved. And in almost all cases, the priorities, they align, okay? So the first one has to do with the zero emission buses. Um, this, this isn't to say that this isn't an important thing to happen. The issue is this, um, there's significant, significant cost attributed to this. And even the feasibility studies themselves, there's a cost to. And the state's not funding that. Like, we, we, e- even if we do it through BOSI's, you, you only get your aid amount back. So there's a cost right up front, just to decide if it can even work for your district, right? The second item there, we've revised the one hundred percent requirement. As of right now, starting in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-seven, oh, I almost jumped that up two years. Starting in twenty-twenty-seven, you have to start purchasing only electric buses. And by twenty-thirty-five, your entire fleet needs to be electric buses. So every time you put some out of commission, you bring them in, bring, bring the new ones, and they have to be electric. Revising the one hundred percent requirement is, is saying this. Let us keep some that are not electric. We have some routes and runs that are pretty far. And in the winter, we know the batteries don't work as long and work as well. We know that we're, we're considered rural, rural school. We have kids that are on buses for an hour, right? We know that if they're on the bus for an hour, and now those buses drop off and I'll go pick up our elementary kids, and that's an hour long too, that, that those buses may not make it through those runs. And there's districts who, who are piloting this, who have experienced that already. Okay, so we're concerned about that. The ranges on these electric buses that have been given are given by the manufacturers themselves. There have not been independent studies on how far these buses will actually be able to move, okay? One of the other things that we've experienced lately right in our power outlet, just what you do if the power goes out at midnight, a lot of your buses are charging. And you don't know. Now you still have to get kids to school the next day, right? Because often, well, by the way, should I say this out loud? Why not? We actually had an issue with the high school, um, where the power was out and nobody really knew, um, because I was waiting, and I had about nine minutes on my watch before we were, maybe not have school that day. Sorry, kids, if you're listening at home. But my point is this, when the power goes out at two forty-five in the morning, what impact does that have on our buses if they're all electric? Putting price caps in place, in other words, making it so that the buses can only cost so much, and otherwise, New York State won't partner with these manufacturers and purchase them. And then the last one, of course, is the utility company challenge. You know, many districts who are going through the surveys, they're hearing back from their power companies that they can't provide the load needed to charge all their buses. So there's work that needs to be done there. Uh, as far as student health, mental health, the, the one thing I want to touch on here, um, telehealth has come a long way. There are great opportunities that we want to be able to take advantage of to put our kids in places where they can talk to, even if it's, even if it's single-session care, um, with, with mental health professionals. So it's something that we're continuing to push and ask for support from the state and funding from the state to allow. As a district, we spend a lot of money on student safety. We wouldn't change a thing, right? We wouldn't change it. But we've received zero new dollars for safety initiatives in our districts. We're spending close to a million dollars on our school resource officers and our school security officers. We wouldn't change it with a lot of money. We have zero eyes technology that helps us detect weapons before they even get to our, into our doors, okay? There's an annual cost to that. Um, we have a thing called the Raptor system that helps us in times of emergency. There's a cost to that. These are all annual costs that we've received no additional funding for. What we're asking the state for is a dedicated line item for school safety, and then let districts choose it how they see fit. The la- the, the, the la- I'll talk about the second one in the next slide. The last one on there, uh, bail for violent threats. When there's a threat to a school district and schools work with law enforcement, and they believe that it was an actual threat, set bail for the people who are doing it. I'm gonna tell you right now, they're not always kids either. Right? Sometimes they're graduates, recent graduates. Sometimes they have nothing to do with your school district at all. About five years ago, we had one of those situations that a threat came to our school and it was somebody who lived nowhere near here. But it came our way and we had to deal with it. As far as staffing's concerned, um, there's something called a two-eleven waiver that's in place right now. What that waiver does is it allows teachers and it allows law enforcement, who have worked for, for the state and are receiving a state pension. It allows them to come back, work for the school, and, um, re- receive more than thirty-five thousand dollars in the course of a year for doing that work. Because right now, that limit's set at thirty-five thousand. The waiver allows them to go beyond that. We're asking them to extend that. The workforce, um, just isn't there, it's not deep enough in certain places. There was a district that, um, in, in the Albany area, that they have three, uh, Spanish teachers, who are all former teachers who have come back to teach. If they weren't there teaching, nobody would be. But you're gonna tell them that they can only do that for thirty-five thousand dollars or less for a year. They'll walk away. Age sixty-three to work without an earning limitation, um, that would be a great number, um, if they would set it there, um, instead of sixty-five. So they, at sixty-three, they could make as much as they want. But we need, again, to bring these people back into the fold. And then the last one, transition provisional employees to probationary, to probationary employees. This has got to change. We get an opportunity to hire someone, they come over to us, they're doing a great job, they've been there for nine months, and then they finally come out with a civil service test. They go out with a ser- civil service test a year and a half later. That, the person that's been doing a great job for more than nine months has to now give up their position to someone else. Who even wants to sign up for the position if they know they're, they can lose it because there's no test being given? And this happens to us all the time. Career technical seven. Twenty percent, one in five of our students in grades eleven and twelve participate in our Career Tech program down the road. But as of right now, only the first thirty thousand dollars of the CTE salaries are reimbursable, even though it's a shared service. We're saying move that up. That thirty thousand dollar amount is, um, from the nineteen eighties. When the starting salary was probably twenty grand, eighteen grand. Right? So we need to kind of catch up in the times, even if they do it in chunks. And then the last one there, need new tier of BOSI's and special services aid. BOSI's, we ask them all the time to provide additional services for our districts. We're asking them to do more and more with special education. So what we're asking the state to do is provide aid for those services that we're asking BOSI's to provide. So what we're asking the state to do is provide aid for those services that we're asking BOSI's to provide to our districts. Universal pre K, um, the first one out there, this was one of the legislative priorities statewide and we think were one of the reasons. Each year, we have additional money left open on our U U P K um grant. Because we don't use up our slots, we want to take some of that money to help transport kids to our pre K. Because we know that our families have told us in surveys that they would send their kids to pre K, but they can't get them there, so what are we doing? We're stopping some of the families who really need it and really want their kids to be better pre K from going to pre K. Oh, what do we know? That in kindergarten, by the end of kindergarten, the students who are in our pre K are doing better than the kids who are not. So we've asked them to provide that, allow for that transportation. Um, the lottery really doesn't affect us, we'd have to have a lottery if more than, because we only have so many slots, hundred ninety three, ninety. Ninety four, hundred ninety four slots, so if we had two hundred, we'd have to have a lottery for those hundred and ninety slots, we we have never been in that position. But there are districts who are always in that position, so it's universal pre K. But it's not really universal, because everybody's not guaranteed to get it, to get it. Um, the two items out here, we don't really u- use the capital outline projects because it's such a small amount of money and we've done such large projects here. Um, capital projects, um, but the last one, support for ELL, um, almost all communities are if see increases in the ELL numbers. And um we're looking for additional support and um financial support for those ELL positions.
So Governor Hochul did present her proposal for the state budget, um, in total, uh, she proposed.
Of um right before that, of not electric buses to kind of help.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Give us a cushion.
I would think so, but we'll see, I mean, you know, two years is a long time from now, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, the mandate, even though it starts in twenty seven. You don't have to buy any buses, right? I mean, or they're gonna make you buy so many electric, or we could say this year we're not buying it.
If you buy a bus.
So if you buy a bus and you want aid on it, starting in twenty twenty seven, you would have to do that, so if we didn't buy buses. At some point, our fleet would, you know, as you know, would start to deteriorate and, you know, so we. Um, we try to buy about six, seven buses every year to turn over our seventy bus fleet every ten years. That's what we've been re- really doing a good job of for for quite some time now, so. Sure, you know, you might say, well, hey, look, we have seventy, we only have about fifty runs, fifty something runs. We can, we can push it out a little bit, I'm I'm sadly, I'm envisioning that we're gonna get to that point where we're. Trying to limp some of these other buses along maybe a little further, and once you do that, now you're putting money in the buses that you. Wouldn't normally want to, or, you know, you're now, are you, are you worried, are you impacting the safety of those buses? Because you're trying to get a little bit more out of them, you know, we've had incredible safety ratings, our transportation department does an incredible job. And our mechanics do a great job, our, you know, when when they come in and they do their um safety checks in in our, in our district. And then the state comes in, I mean, it's, it's, it's amazing, like the work that they do. How's that gonna be impacted if we all of a sudden have older buses? You know, and I didn't even mention, when you move the electric, there's all new training for the people who are working on those buses.
And equipment too, maybe.
Probably equipment, the good news is, we did look, we put in new lifts, we did look at the weight of the, the, the electric buses and the length and. So we think we're okay with the new lifts that we've put in over there. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thanks everyone. I thank you for the opening, back up the mic, uh, Mr. Blaskis, you wanna talk about the thirty seven thousand millions?
Just keep moving the desk.
Yeah, it's only millions.
That wasn't me, that was New York State.
Looks better.
Um, next one is uh, I don't support board discussion, do we have any other discussion? Old business. New business, we do have a couple of things for new business, uh, Dan, you wanna talk about the school calendar?
Happy to, um, if you can put it up there on the screen, that'd be great, okay? Uh, I think, I think that's great, maybe even a little smaller, because they have one in front of them here, that's probably great, thank you. Okay, so if you look, for those that don't know, um, the joint management team, which is the. Is four of our BOSI's, so it's Williams, Niagara, Cat Allegheny, Erie one and Erie two. Those four BOSI's get together and they put together a calendar, you say why, because it's really important that the BOSI's programs. Are offered at times that the schools will attend, right? And so there's very few days ever that they don't align, so that kids are always getting programming, okay? And that said, um, we have, all districts have a different number of days for their teacher days, those are contractual. In New York State, you have to have at least a hundred and eighty, we have a hundred and eighty eight in our district, okay? Five of which are superintendent conference days, so. On the screen that you're looking at, you can see the five days in pink, actually, that are superintendent conference days. Tuesday through Thursday uh in August, with the first student day coming back on the second of September. We would then have another conference day on the twenty sixth of September, and then the last conference day would be on the thirteenth of March, okay? What's unusual about this calendar next year is what happened around the winter break, so if you can move that up. We've had a long history here of having the twenty third of December off when we put together our calendar, okay? So um, we've usually the twenty third off, if we had the twenty third off, and this was true with a lot of districts. And you didn't have the twenty second off as well, you'd be looking at kids coming to school for one day. On a Monday, and then being off for the next two weeks. Because if you look at the top, the first is um, January first is actually a Thursday. And again, bringing people back on one day, we know what happens on attendance if we do that. So for next year, this calendar has off from the twenty second. All the way through to the second, so that's actually a two week break. That will not, I'm just telling you ahead of time, that likely will not happen again. The following year, the calendar gets very compressed, okay? Um, right now, for next year, you can see that the school year starts on September second. That's really early, and it ends on the twenty sixth of June, which is really late, and you're like, so what? Well, you can get a hundred and eighty eight days into that calendar a lot easier than next year, if you start, I didn't, I'm not looking at it right now. But then if you start on September fifth and you end on the twenty third. Now you're trying to get those days into a more compressed area, it makes things a lot more challenging, so the number of days that you can have off within September to June. Um, this year is larger, it's easier to for us to do it than it will be next year. This is really as good as it gets as far as having days off and the ease of putting together the calendar, okay? Um, the other things I'll just point out really quick, you can see the uh February break is the sixteenth through the twentieth. Um, the April break is the third through the tenth, um. There's one day uh in May, the twenty fifth, um, and those are really the 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 highlights. Uh, and you can see we're Thanksgiving wise, so I don't know if you have any questions, this is very much in line with what the J M T is doing. We do have an extra superintendent conference day, some than some, one more than some districts, so that's why we have that um fifth. Pink day on the calendar. No, it actually falls on the holiday, so I think it's the seventeenth or eighteenth of February next year, so it's already part of the break. Good question. Any other questions? With calendar.
Uh, okay, the other new business we have is uh approval for nomination of Orlean's Niagara B- BOSI Board candidate. Um, I am on it currently, I I I would like to be on it one more term. Um, does anybody have any questions or concerns or has somebody else that wants to do it?
I'd like to make a motion to the Bob McDermott, stay on uh BOSI's board.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, I will oppose.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bill.
So moved.
Um, we also need to take action, if you could, on the calendar.
Okay, the calendar, I have a motion to approve the calendar for twenty twenty five, twenty six school year.
She'll move. I'll second.
Right, okay. Uh, any, uh, all approve?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Approved. All any opposed? Okay. So moved. All right, what else we got here? Any public comments? No. Uh, board member comments? Yeah, all right. All right, okay, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A motion to adjourn?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm staying. We're done.